All right, first up on the hit parade is Valerie Schaefer from Economic Development Corporation. Good morning or good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm back.
Nice to see you again.
Yes, thanks for having me. I don't have anything specific to request of you today, but it had been a couple of months since I've been here due to either you had schedule conflicts or I had a conflict and actually supposed to be here next week, but I'll be at the Indiana Economic Development Association Conference, so I did at least want to come and give you an update on a few things. The first of which is our financial report. So you'll see the board didn't meet on Monday. You have a copy of the packet here, and I'll just jump to our July financials. Since we didn't have a July board meeting, we had to approve June and July financials, but we're in great shape so far year-to-date. We were under budget in July by a little over $6,100, and we're under budget year-to-date by $34,457.80. You'll notice the treasures report will be a little expanded. We're now including the profit and loss and the balance sheet for all of our accounts. Since we do have more accounts than we used to, we're trying to keep funding separate for the programs that we're running. So we have the Make My Move Mover Incentive Savings Account, we have our BLIT Savings Account, so that we can more easily get funds from the county to distribute to reimburse the city and towns, and then we have our Revitalized Richmond Account, because we are a subaward with ERLM, passing through incentives to AP Development as part of their $30 million revitalization project. So you'll just see those additional reports in your packet each month moving forward, and if you have any questions about that activity, let us know, but typically we transfer from a savings account to our operating to cut a check based on an invoice that we received.
Okay.
In terms of EDC activity, there's been a lot going on. Sarah's still plugging away with the Wayne County BLIT program. We just made some distributions to Hagerstown in Dublin this past month, and so homes are coming down, but there's several more still in the pipeline. Only 12 have been demolished to date, but we've inspected 33 properties, so there's numerous in progress.
Let's talk about that for a minute if we could, because we talked about it this morning with council. And it seemed to me that the option that the council thought made the most sense was to go ahead and write a check to the EDC for the $830,000 that is appropriated for that BLIT program that is not yet spent. So we committed $170,000.
No, you're thinking of half. $170 was the Housing Accelerator Program.
That's right.
So BLIT elimination is $390,000 from county edit and $390,000 from consolidated edit. I think we've only drawn down about $100,000 to date from consolidated.
You're right, okay. So you've only spent $100,000 total out of the six, what, 780?
I just don't even see it on here, I'm blind.
So I guess from our perspective, do we want to go ahead and put that money in the EDC's hands so that Sarah Mitchell can administer the BLIT remediation program? Do we want to have them send us invoices?
Is there a problem then, Coach, I don't know about your timeline for expenditures, but I doubt you're going to spend all that in '25, are you?
We may need to seek an extension. Our MOU between the county and the city and towns for the distribution of the funds
is through the end of this year.
By October.
October, okay.
And if they're not going to spend it, they need to let us know, but the unsafe building process is in progress for numerous homes, but they may not complete demolition and the payment by then.
Creating an account that would just be of limited usage, so you don't worry about encumbering those monies. If you have to take them into the next budget year, I guess that's a concern I would see.
Well, and I guess that's what I was thinking about, is if we transfer it to the EDC, it's not going to be in the consolidated fund where they would pay back every year. We could have an inter-local agreement or a memorandum of understanding. And we would say, as long as the BLIT program is going on, you have access to these funds.
Through such-and-such date, subject to extension if you agree with commissioners.
Right, so does that, number one, Commissioner, does that make sense to you? Or do you want them to send us invoices as they complete demolition?
Well, our first draw was about $138,000, so we did get one lump sum to then be able to pay reimbursements, but it's just a matter of how do we draw down those lump sums and at what frequency?
Do you have a suggestion?
So to get us through the remainder of the year, I was thinking perhaps we request $100,000 each from county edit, consolidated edit, see how far that gets us, and then maybe make another draw from there.
That sounds simple to me.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Keep it simple.
Okay, so you would submit a claim for that?
Claim for trust.
From each of those funds, and then we would cut checks? Okay.
Yes.
If everybody's good with that, just go ahead and submit the claims, and we'll start down that path. Do we need any kind of MOU or anything to do it that way?
You're authorizing the payment with the claim. I'm okay with that, except I don't think you've got a structure internally here at least for monitoring where you are, because you say you've drawn down about $138,000.
$138,000, yeah.
Something.
But we're pretty sure already have an MOU, the EDC and the county.
I think we do.
Yeah.
But it expires at the end of October?
Yes, yes. Well, it expires at the end of the year, but it states we need to expend the funds until October, and if we're not, then we need to discuss an extension, I believe is what it says.
Okay.
Is that in the BLIT provincial or the?
The Wayne County BLIT program MOU, yes.
Okay, well, at this point, we'll consult the MOU and go ahead and prepare some claims, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
As long as it was in the county, you can track it. I can get rid of the money and let the program run, you know?
We don't want to slow it down any, that's for sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what's next?
The next topic I wanted to discuss was the Make My Move program. So on page 45 of the packet, you'll see my staff report and some results of the program. Happy to report we have met our 30 mover goal, which we had until September. Actually, at 3 o'clock today, I meet our 29th mover, who just moved here for his incentive check, and then in two weeks, the final mover will be here, a resident of Wayne County. But in total, we have recruited 71 individuals to the community, 48 adults and 23 children. The average household size is 2.4 people, and the average personal income of our remote workers is $102,000 a year. Average age is 40, and the top states where we received remote workers were Florida, California, and Ohio. 15 people and their family have now been here for over a year and all intend to remain in Wayne County, that's what they tell us. And we've been talking with Make My Move about the potential to expand the program. We really feel like in the last six months, we got into a really great rhythm where we were receiving a higher number of applicants that were qualified candidates, that were converting to movers, and so we have good momentum. The program is still technically open, although they're not processing any applications, but we are still receiving marketing from Make My Move, because they're giving us some time to evaluate whether or not we want to extend the program. The one holdup is that, you'll recall when we decided to enter into this program, that there was a 50% matching grant from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. With the change in the administration, program dispersments had been put on hold. We're told that those are being released, but Wayne County is owed $120,000 from the IEDC. $60,000 will go back to the city of Richmond, who paid the original administration fees to Make My Move to begin the program, and if you recall, the other $60,000 will go back to the Consolidated Edit Fund based on the MOU between the city of Richmond and Wayne County, because the county funded the second phase. So we are still waiting for $120,000. We can apply for a third grant for IEDC, even though we haven't received our first two dispersments, but in total, if we were to move forward with another goal of 20 remote workers, $100,000 in financial incentives, with the reimbursement from IEDC, it would cost us roughly $80,000. And so it would be advantageous for us to then roll that $60,000 that the county has reimbursed into another phase of the program. One change this time around that we can make is to also accept job seekers, so it wouldn't be limited to remote workers, and we could actually support our existing employers with their recruitment efforts to bring individuals here to take jobs that are open.
I think that would be a huge step to take. I think we absolutely should do that. And so you're saying an additional $20,000, assuming that at some point the IEDC releases that $60,000?
Correct.
And we've got a contract with them or a signed agreement that says they will, right?
We do, yes.
Certain criteria, which we have met.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. We're just waiting for them to release the funds, is what we're told.
Do you, when you have a draft contract, we'll want to take a look at that, but Aaron, any thoughts? I think we absolutely should keep moving in that direction.
I totally agree. I think we have great momentum, and that just continues the momentum and expands and broadens that program. That's awesome.
Are you planning to try to bring in some private sector businesses to partner with us and maybe even pay that $20,000?
We certainly could. That's a conversation we can have. We do need to start working with employers to, if we do decide to do this, just promote it so that they can take advantage of it to help in their recruitment efforts. So whether or not we ask them that idea is, I'm open to that. Just take a little more time and work to get the infrastructure of everything established.
And what kind of timeframe do we have to implement if we?
We're really on our own timeline.
On our own?
Yeah.
But it's another contract that we would do.
It would be another, yeah, year-long contract.
But we have time to get some of these done.
We do, we do, yeah. I didn't want to pressure us into moving forward, not having received the funding back from IEDC and knowing that that money is in the bank and that we can reinvest it into this program. I would like for us to receive the funds, honestly.
We don't want to wait six months. We'd like to, now that we have the momentum going and kind of down the process, we want to do it as quickly as possible.
And if we can help touch some of those bases with some employers?
Okay.
I think we're happy to do that. I think it makes a lot of sense to go that route.
And I would propose this time around that the EDC would be the entity that would enter into the contract with Make My Move, so that we don't have the MOU situation with the city and all the additional approvals that were needed.
I did have a question. Do you know, out of the, what, 78 adults, 48 adults really that moved, do you know about where the percentage of how many in the city, how many out in the county? Are they all living within the city?
I would say the majority are in the city. I can think of maybe three that moved outside of Richmond.
Do you know how many bought homes?
No, but I can find that out. I would say, I would venture to guess 40% probably bought homes, but I'll get that figure.
Then they could find them.
Right. Okay, well, I will continue to work on this. I just wanted to make sure that I had your support before I put much more time into getting a new contract for your consideration.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have today.
Questions?
Before she leaves, do we want to talk about the Spring Grove edit while she's still in the room?
We do.
Just in case we have any questions.
So we've got the designation of Wayne County as recipient of one half of a fractional amount of certified distribution of economic development income taxes and the capital improvement plan from Spring Grove, which is all part of that. So council approved it this morning, subject to our approval. Any questions, comments? If not, I have a motion to.
Move it.
A second. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
I just said it quietly, so aye.
Couldn't hear you because of the microphones. All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Okay. Speaking of microphone, you want to, let's go on to Tim first, and then we'll talk about microphones.
Yeah.
Can we get the sheriff?
Yeah.
Do the sheriff too, so.
Sheriff, get him in and out.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
All right, sounds good. You're up.
I'm up. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I apologize, a little casually dressed. I grabbed a button up and left it on my desk.
You're fine.
I wanted to kind of bring it up a little bit in here and match the tone.
It's really just a t-shirt that looks like a button up, so.
That's it, that's it. All right, well, thank you guys for taking a few minutes. So here representing Drug Free Wayne County Partnership, of course, and I think you're all familiar with kind of how that works, but for the record, Drug Free Wayne County Partnership is Wayne County's local coordinating council, which is an initiative established back in '87, I think, out of the governor's office. So has the local coordinating council. One of our main responsibilities is the management of the funds that come back to us for grants. So every year, a couple times a month, the countermeasure fees that come in for drug or alcohol charges that come back to the state level, they have a portion they keep back out, and then they throw it into the bucket at the state level, the Drug Free Communities Fund, and then those funds make their way back to Wayne County here through the auditor's office. And then once a year, around somewhere between April and June, then we get ahold of those funds, and then we can open up a grant cycle to distribute those out. So this year, the total bucket of money was at, I've got a handout here, I'll give you here in just a second, the total bucket of money was at $41,802. So that is divided into four equal parts. One-fourth of that going to cover administrative costs, which for us is just simply an executive director's salary piece of it, minus a little bit of cost for office supplies, a few hundred bucks. And then the other remaining equal thirds are to be distributed in the three different sectors for grants. So a third of it is to support any law enforcement and justice grants that we might get applications for. A third is for prevention and education, and then the final third is for any treatment or recovery supports. So when we open up the cycle, we open it up as such with those three buckets. And then the monies, although they are equal amounts in all three, we can't move from one bucket to the other bucket, we have to just keep them. So this year, if I'll give you this handout here.
Sir?
So what we do is we wait until we have turned in a comprehensive community plan, and then as soon as that is approved at the state level, to give us the official approval on the final amount, we open up a grant cycle to the community, and then we leave the window open for about 30 days. And then our process is all the applications that come in, we form review committees, which consist of our board, the Drug Free Wayne County Board, as well as a couple other individuals. This year, we recruited, once again, Tamar Brinkman from United Way, and Brian Schleifer, which has been at Reed, but then over at Wayne County Foundation now, so they have a lot of grant review expertise, has some other members of our board. So it's about 10 or 11 people that review and make sure we don't have any conflicts of interest, and we have one group review the law enforcement, one with the prevention, and the one with the treatment. So this year, we had received a total of 13 applicants, and we had 11 that you're looking at on this list that were approved. So, not that you want to get too much in the weeds here, but one of our applicants had applied, but they were not eligible to even be considered just because of, they had not met some grant requirements from the previous year. They have to turn in quarterly reports and attend so many partnership meetings, and they just had not met those requirements, so that one was eliminated. And then, so only one other one then that did not get any funding at all. Everyone else was approved at an amount, not their requested amount. So 11 approved. So what was kind of unique this year, and you can take a look at the, you know, the top two law enforcement, so again, we only had one other application that came in, that was the one that we could not move forward with due to the ineligible, and then four in the yellow there that were the prevention and education, and then we had six applicants down in the red, which is the treatment and recovery, and one did not get funded. So what is kind of unique this year, just so that you kind of understand how this works, is that we don't have to, we don't have to spend all the money, but ideally, you need to spend all the money that's given. My executive director role here, maybe going on the third year, is, so my experience is a little limited, but looking even back further, most of the time, we distribute all the money that comes in. Usually, there's far more applicants than there is money, and so it's more a question of trying to figure out who gets what. This year, it was just a little bit different. We just had a much smaller number of applicants. Like last year, for example, we had 24 applicants, and this year, only 13. So it kind of changed the game a little bit. We didn't even have enough money to distribute all, like in the law enforcement category. We fully funded both of those applications that came in. I mean, we funded it, they're 100% request, and that still left us with $3,951 left. So we didn't even have a way to spend that money. We didn't have the applicants to support it. In a similar way, in the prevention/education category, same thing happened. All of the applicants were funded, but that review committee did not choose to fund them all at their fully requested amounts. We use a grant scoring rubric, and based upon the way the applicants were scored, the committee just did not want to fund them at full amount. So that left us with $3,551 left in the fund. So this is, and none left in the treatment and recovery, all of those monies were spent. So it's kind of an interesting thing. So we have, you know, basically roughly $7,500 left that we did not distribute. So what the plan will be, and this happened two years ago, we had about $4,000 left, I think Brad remembers at that time. So it was, what we did there was, we just opened up another cycle later in the year, which is what the state recommended that we do. They really don't want you to, just, you know, there's $7,500 there, ready to get into the community to help, and they don't want it just set there for a whole nother year. Although it's not required we open another cycle, that's kind of what the boards are meaning towards, is maybe in the fall or the winter, we'll open another cycle and try to distribute those remaining funds.
And it'll be limited to those two categories?
Have to stay in those exact categories. Say to law enforcement or justice agencies, hey, there's $3,900 there to spend. It's hard to say why we didn't get as many applications, but the amount that we're receiving in that fund is going down tremendously every year. I mean, it is, when I pull up here, in 2022, just three years back, the amount we had was twice what it is now. So it has just constantly, and I think two years prior to that, it was an additional, it was like $25,000 per category. So the amounts are just going down every year, which is just a byproduct of either less countermeasure fees being implemented or less countermeasure fees being collected. Either way, the bucket just gets smaller. So they're small amounts, and I think some agencies see it as it's just a mini-grant, and maybe they don't see it making as big an impact, so we just didn't get the applications we generally do. But, so that's what's before you. Now it's just to say if it's okay to officially approve those, these are, again, committee reviewed, and our board has voted on them to approve them as a recommendation to you to release the funds to those agencies.
All right, do we have a recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation of releasing these funds.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just for full disclosure, I do not have anything to do with any of these grants approving, reviewing. Matter of fact, I'm no longer on the board, so.
Okay, just for full disclosure.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing on, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Appreciate your work. Sheriff Redder.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and I don't have you on my agenda, so what brings you here today?
Actually, I'm sorry?
Talk freely.
I've got two very quick items. One, I came to you two weeks ago about a request that we had from Cambridge City Volunteer Fire Department for radios, yes. And we've identified 10 radios that seem to be in good working condition, and it would be appropriate to release to that entity. If you don't mind, I'll bring up a letter drafted by Chief Deputy Allen Moore, who researched the radios that we have on hand. He's provided the serial numbers for each of those. It would be my request that we release these radios in a form of a donation to the Cambridge City Volunteer Fire Department. And these would be 10 Kenwood NX200 radios.
Which are radios you guys don't even use anymore, correct?
That's correct, we do not.
I remember those radios.
Yes.
So I think when we talked before, you were talking about some of them aren't any good at all, they're completely junk.
That's correct.
It mentions 58, so are these the only 10 that work, or is?
Not the only 10, they're just 10 that we identified, and that was the initial request from Cambridge City, was to get 10 radios. And I thought that he put that information in there. I did not, we just discussed it. Chief Deputy Moore had suggested that, since he attends the county fire meetings, volunteer fire meetings, that we would mention that to the other fire departments, and, you know, if they have any interest, then we could take a list and distribute those accordingly.
So Ron, we need to make a finding that these have no value to us?
Yeah, I would just incorporate the Sheriff Redder's letter to you dated July 31st, and have it show as part of the minutes. authorized to transfer the radios to.
Cambridge City Fire Department.
It's Cambridge City?
Cambridge City Fire Department, yeah.
Well, is the fire department a legal entity? I don't know.
I don't know?
It's a good question.
It's a great question.
I would say the minutes should reflect it, that they will be donated to Cambridge City for the use of its fire department, leave it at that. I think we're covered.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? We'll keep us posted on whether anybody else is interested in acquiring some of those.
I sure will. The second.
Hang on, we need to vote.
Oh, my bad.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Just trying to quickly move through to not use up too much of your time. The second item that I have is we also identified some old CERT protective equipment. This protective equipment is for the jail staff who operated on a special team that was designed to deal with barricaded prisoners or prisoners that were creating substantial disturbances or riots or anything such as that that required a special response. This was protective equipment that's been in our inventory for well over a decade. I'd hate to guess how long we've actually had it, but I suspect 15 or more years. It's no longer used by our team. We've got new and updated equipment, and it has no actual use or value for us. I've included photographs along with a list of those items, and would ask that we could do one or two things with it. My preference would be to advertise it among other sheriffs throughout the state, to see if there's any interest in them, and then we just simply donate those items to them, or we could dispose of them, one or two, whichever of your preferences.
Ron, any thought?
I mean, if they can be put to use by somebody, I mean, I guess the question is, how much of a burden is it for you now, wherever they're being stored, and when are you needing to clear them out?
No, it's just something, we're trying to clean up things and.
I'd say if you want to authorize, you know, soliciting interest from other sheriff's departments, I think it's fine. Come back, if you need then authorization specific to any one or two or three, whatever transfers, then after what you deem to be a reasonable time, I think they're totally without value. without value.
Yeah. So if you can't give them away, well, destroy them.
Destroy them. Yeah.
Whatever we need to do to keep it up. So I'm...
I'll make a motion that we approve the sheriff to find a suitable place for these to be.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So keep us posted on how successful you are with your garage sale.
I will. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. Thanks. Appreciate it, Randy. See you. Ron?
I really feel like I've been awful busy not to have anything for you. I don't know, I have anything you need to take action on. I do, I will try to get a little more information before, that's council, that's not you guys, don't go. The 20th on the other bond issue.
Okay, okay. All right. Any questions for Ron? If not, let's move on to Mr. Higginbotham, and I will give Mr. Duenger the first comment.
No, you're gonna start off with me. Well, I want to make a motion that we find someone to repair and fix our sound system and computers, because that was not working properly too. And then after today's meeting, I believe council will probably be more than generous with funds to repair it. So I don't know how we're gonna go about doing that, but I find somebody that's...
I did talk to Craig a little bit about the possibility of adding individual microphones to the seats up here. He was gonna look into that with...
Yeah, I talked to Craig about that too, so we'll explore that. But since this morning's meeting, Caleb was in trying to restore the sound, and as you remember, at about 10:50, it came back on. So what had happened, Dante's software had crashed, and now why it did that, I'm not sure we know. So he deleted the current program, went to the company, downloaded the new program. It had been updated, it had a new version, so it's been updated. And then that's when the sound came on. Now, it lost all the settings from the previous, so it's not set, but it is working. Yeah. While he was in there, when we were still meeting in finance, the UPS box went off, which means there was a power interruption. Yes. Obviously, you didn't see it here, because that's on a different circuit. I think that's pulled from the panel box behind the commissioners. So as Caleb and I were talking, there's been some other abnormalities that's occurred. Remember when Wi-Fi drops out sometimes for no reason? We came in Monday, and the panel that controls the sound on the wall there had turned off and rebooted. So first thing we're gonna do is put a meter on that and monitor, because UPS boxes will monitor low voltage, they'll go off on low voltages too. And we've had that in this building before. You remember, a couple of years ago, the recorder had some issues with their computer equipment, and we did the same test and found that there were periods throughout the day where the voltage dropped below what was acceptable for the electronic equipment. So we ended up having to run a new circuit for them. But we're gonna do this first, we're gonna check the voltage coming into that room over a period of a couple of days. But we already reached out to someone to look at the sound system itself, so, but we need to determine, make sure that there's not a voltage drop in there.
I know you've been trying, Steve, we just...
Yeah, listen, I agree with Brad. It was embarrassing this morning.
It was?
Every meeting that happens, it's embarrassing.
Yes. We spent a lot of money to update this room, and one of the things that we wanted was good audio and video.
Exactly. Some of you probably are old enough to remember some of the early Saturday Night Lives clips, but there was one where they had a guy up there for the hearing impaired, and he would yell exactly what the person said rather than sign. I just thought of that when that was occurring this morning.
That was pretty much what we had this morning.
I know, exactly. So...
And honestly, what I would like to see, I would like to see is, again, and I think we all agree, the sound, the audio, the video, it all fixed in here, get it all fixed. And let's see what that's gonna cost, let's get it done, because it's never been right to start with, and I think we can all agree with that, so.
Well, it was as simple as like when the health department met, depending where Dan sat with his computer, it worked, and it would not drop. If he's down at this end, it would drop, which is closer to the router.
Which doesn't make any sense.
But if he's on the other end, so it's just never worked properly.
But see, then Craig, I talked about that, and I'm not sure he monitored what route he was using, but when he says down here, he's closer to the router in the commissioners' chamber.
Yes.
And if he moves down there, he's gonna drop out from the commissioners' chambers. I don't know, but I got it.
It needs to be a high priority.
100%.
Thank you. Again, it's not your fault, it's, technology has challenges, and we need to...
I think we can all agree.
We know the responsibility.
I didn't...
We do.
None of us here picked this person, so.
Correct, correct. All right. What else?
So Fairground Spark, you heard the question from Beth this morning, that's reasonable, and that's kind of what we're always shooting for, the gravel will be down in October. We still need that report.
Brandon's been doing other things.
You can kind of broaden that along though, if you still want to make that. Well, you may not make, because once we have that, you still got it, if it needs drainage, we've got it, that is a tough drag. So times, it's August, so.
Yep. I understand.
Okay. Nothing on the maintenance building security fence, the west parking lot lights, you did agree to that last week, and that has been signed, and they are ordering the parts to have that installed. Front entrance of the courthouse, I'm sorry, on that, is that a significant, assuming they can get parts, is it a one or two day operation? Oh, I think it'd be a week. A week? Yeah. Okay. Because all the work's above ground, you know, they're not having to dig holes except for posts.
And I just, I was over that way earlier today, and the coroner's vehicle is parked in front of the entrance, and there was a sheriff's van trying to get people in there, and the unattended coroner's vehicle was in the way. So we just need to fix that so that the coroner's not in that area.
I agree.
And I talked to the coroner to tell him what we're doing.
Good.
Thank you.
And he seemed receptive that that's where he will park his cars.
Thank you.
Will just take away the plugs on the other side.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Then the courthouse front entrance, still, still...
Still going.
Well, we still have delays.
Moving at the speed of government.
This is your, this is your kind of project right here.
They decide me to take it over, I'll take it over and get it done. They decide on paper.
He makes me mad, and then they stop, and so. Anyway, they've got the temporary ramp to replace, to use while they're fixing the permanent ramp. So it's, so at some point in time here, I anticipate next week, we'll be switching over, because then they'll, they'll fix that. We've got an issue with the bollard placement. They're not, they're not in the place where we had approved, and they're not the size of bollards that we had approved. I sent a long email to Kevin, LWC, and pretty well put out a timeline as to what my perception of the process has been, and where we picked this. Got emailed back this morning, and he, after he stopped to his staff, and they looked through their emails, he concurs with what I said. So now, we need to find a resolution. So we'll be talking about that when we come up with a couple of thoughts. And then I do have the numbers back on the courthouse security entrance, and I'll be having, I'll get those to you before next week, so we can discuss those next week. And then you heard me point out to council this morning, that they have, that the sheriff's department has received their invoice for the cars. It was for five of them, all right? All five. So they must be...
All five of them?
Yeah. So they must be getting ready to deliver.
Good.
Go ahead.
Meaning deliver, meaning they go pick...
Well, they go pick, that was in the, I didn't want to pay for delivery, so.
I agree. I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
Next week is the bid opening for the elevator project.
Oh, yeah, correct, yeah. And so at our, at our pre-bid, we had at least one contractor for each of the alternates in the bid itself. So there's somebody specifically here for the flu removal.
Good.
Who does that. And in the words of Steve Sweet from LWC, this is my kind of job. This is what the guy said, so. He was looking forward to bidding on.
And then we had, we got other contractors that we haven't had before?
Yes, yes.
That are...
And then we have contractors that did bid it before, bidding it again?
Yes.
Okay. So there you are. So next week, we'll receive bids, hopefully at least three.
That's all I have.
And I had a question to reference that to Ron. If we had a contractor has bid it, and is the lowest, but we have an outstanding contract, you know, has completed work with us, or well, has done work for, and is still in the process of finishing something that we've had some issues with, is that legally a way for us to say, no, we're not taking this, because we already have...
Well, I mean, it's gonna be fact specific, but you're gonna have to show a evidentiary basis to conclude that the person is not responsive or responsible.
Or has done stuff without following our...
The two, the two key words is responsive and responsible. Responsive is he's responding to your bid.
Yeah, well...
If he says, here's your bid, and I could, I can do this, this, and this, and this, here's my price, and he's complying with all your requirements of the bid, then he's responsive. Responsible then, is where you get into, is he capable of doing the job he's bidding on? That's a little more subjective, but as Ron said, if you have, you know, pretty good documented evidence...
What type of job are you talking about?
In this, in this case, it'd be the elevator bids.
Okay.
But we've talked about this in the past, that we keep rewarding contractors who have done not what we asked them to do, or have issues with them, whether it be on the jail, or in the courthouse, or whatever, and we just keep giving them, because they're the only, the only bidder, or the lowest?
Well, we'll, we'll see next week, I guess.
And we did, I did specifically put that language in the bid.
What language?
Responsive and responsible. Demonstrate.
I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to the bid next week. I just wanted to put it out there, but I don't think we keep, should keep rewarding somebody that doesn't do what we ask them to do.
Well, I think we're in the process of asserting a claim, aren't we?
And, I haven't, we haven't had a discussion, I haven't had a discussion specifically about our claim, although we, I have had discussions with him about the retainerage, and he is comfortable with us retaining the entire amount that was set aside for the retainerage. We talked about the two issues. He believes that this lug issue is permitted. I said, well, I'm not agreeing with you at this point. I'll submit this to our engineer at DLC. But then the contractor went on to say that he'll fix it if he needs to. So I think those two things would be resolved without much issue.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right. Any questions for Steve?
Nope.
Let's go ahead and take care of claims in a minute.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims for the commissioners' meeting July 30th, 2025.
Second.
What did I say?
The claims.
I'm sorry. Let me restate that. Let me, let me take that back. My apologies.
Well, wait a minute.
Take back your second.
Yeah, I'll take that one back.
Take, take two.
Take two.
Sorry. I would like to make a motion to approve the commissioners' meeting minutes for July 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I have the following claims. Boston Mutual dated July 30th, 2025.
It's been a long day, yeah.
It's been a long, long little bit. I'm sorry.
Frank did these without flaw.
I know. Well, 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 state and local...
You watched the video.
I did. July 30th, 2025, I always do. And then CASA claims dated 8/6/2025, I can't even read writing right now, I'm sorry. It's a, it's an ordeal, I guess. And CenterPoint dated 8/7/2025, I would like to make a motion to approve those four claims.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Aaron, anything new at this point on the opioid settlement grant process?
So the committee's met, rubric has been created, and the committee is good with the rubric. I don't know if that's something that you feel like we need to approve, Ron? Is that something that the commissioner should approve as well before we move forward to that process? The rubric scoring for the application for the opioid funding? Or is that something should be approved, or is it okay that just, that's what we use?
What committee are you using? Are you using the...
Health First Indiana opioid funding, it's a joint now committee.
With the health department?
Yes, with the health department.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't hurt for you to look at, I mean, I don't know what, you know, if it's coming, if you've examined it, and it's come with your recommendation, I think commissioners...
I will make sure that that is available for all of us next week at our meeting. So for us to approve, because we got a little bit of time anyway before that takes effect.
We're talking about September, the month of September, when the application period would be open?
September 1 through September 30th is when applications will be open for that. The application process will be sent out.
Tentatively, Mike.
Tentatively, Mike, yeah, thank you. Application or the packets will be sent out to organizations who may be applying and available, and it'll be announced that that process will be starting. And then again, I'll make sure that, I believe we've all received those emails of that, and if not, I will forward...
What are the parameters of the, is it a grant process?
It's the opioid funding from the state.
But it's a grant, it is a grant.
Yes, it is a grant, I'm sorry, yes. So, and it's restricted and unrestricted lines of that.
Dollar limitation on any project, or I mean...
Not at this point in time. It'll be determined by the committee on how much would be awarded. They'll put in how much they're seeking, and then the, according to the scoring rubric in the scoring committee, look at that and just determine the amount that will be awarded. Of course, it also depends on how much money we have available as well, that's a big point.
And is there a requirement for an applicant's part, match or partial match?
No.
There's no requirement for match. What do we have, about 230,000?
In restricted?
Restricted, and...
20 some thousand?
23,000, something like that. And unrestricted at this point.
So, yeah. And I'll make, I'll make sure you get copies of those.
I wouldn't overcomplicate it, I mean, but I just want the process to be subject, I don't want somebody to say, I didn't understand, this is part of the process, or whatever.
Right. And, and one reason why, and I agree, Jeff kind of alluded and said, you know, I think we need to get a process and get a standard process, and to where it's the same, and this is a process we're wanting to continue to use year after year after year, so every year we don't have to set up a new process, just use the same application until this whole grant funding is complete.
One thing I found helpful, even though we didn't, even though we weren't successful, so when we applied for the downtown revitalization, there were... there were the criteria that would be factored in. I don't know the weighting of them, but still, that was helpful for an applicant to know that because it allowed you to assess your, you know, aspects of your project you want to emphasize for instance.
Right. And when applications are sent out, it'll have the scoring rubric in it so people know exactly what we're looking at and exactly what we're expecting. So it'll, it's a just upfront and clear process and so we're, we're excited about getting that moving forward and, and helping out some of our non-for-profits in the area and organizations that, that help with that, with the opioid.
Good. All right. Thanks, Aaron, for taking, taking charge of that process. Couple of things. Just wanted to mention to you that I've been working with healthy animals. We've already talked about several times. Approved tentatively to give them a grant of working with the Wayne County Foundation to repair and expand their outdoor kennel area. You know, our, our incentive to work with them is that we contract with them to handle dogs and cats that are picked up by our animal control officer. And if we can make sure that they have enough room for us, we'll be able to continue that, so. They, they finally got a, a quote for concrete work. It's four or $500 less than they expected. And so we're able to reduce the grant by a little bit. I have a meeting scheduled with Rebecca Gilliam at the foundation to work out the details. But we've already talked to counsel. They've authorized us to, and I believe you all are, were in agreement to go up to $30,000 on the county side if we can get the rest from the foundation. Rebecca has indicated that they're able to do that. And so we'll be finalizing those details and I'll give Ron on putting together a memorandum of understanding with Healthy Animals on, you know, what's, what's required of them to receive those monies. So we'll keep you posted on that. We have, we've been talking about the Main Street property and I followed up with, with Mr. Lyons to, to get a letter of engagement from him to do one of the appraisals. Been missing each other all day, so we'll get that worked out and I'll bring that to you as soon as I.
Who would be the second appraisal? Are we?
Tim Smith. It's Tim Smith, the assessor, is going to work on that with Gary, the township assessor, so.
Did you tell him?
I, I've talked to him a couple of times and with Gary and they're gonna work out whether they're gonna do it jointly or one of them is gonna take the lead on that. But I haven't heard anything final on, on that yet, so we need to try to move that forward. And then assuming we, we get appraisals in the next couple of weeks, Ron, what is, what's the process moving forward to schedule?
I followed the timeline I gave you. I just may, may have to make adjustments too.
So we need the appraisal before we.
Yeah.
Schedule the, the auction.
I didn't know you'd made, had we made the decision to go on auction, I thought we went to bids without an auctioneer.
We need to decide, I guess.
Think you'd decide.
We've talked back and forth on whether we want to do that or have an auction. I guess my preference is to try to get it over in one day rather than go back and forth every 24 or 48 hours with people raising bids, but.
Well, I'll, I'll take a look at that and we'll see. Are we gonna?
What, what do you guys, what's your preferences, guys?
I, I think for me, the easiest way is just doing an auction. Let them bid. Keep going back and forth and be done right then and there if there is back and forth. You might want to be one bidder. You don't know.
I would agree. I would agree.
So you'll, you'll revisit that based on that input and what we need to do and when. But we do need the, we need the appraisals, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Aaron? You have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Brad? Bobby? Everything. Steve, anything else? Ron? Simona? If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.